Six forty-five.
You gotta buy one ticket.
You gotta buy the adults.
All right, so at seven fifteen we'll have the the public meeting for the, or the public hearing to talk about the property purchase. According to Mr. Hoover, we have one public comment. He was saying who might show up, but we did advertise on social media and put a notice on the website and also sent some to the paper. Yeah? Okay, so we'll see who shows up to that. And let's move on to the agenda for the regular meeting tonight. So twenty-five is the purchase of the property. Has anyone, heard from anyone about that?
Yes. I've heard from about three residents.
Okay.
And all of them thought it was a good idea.
Okay.
All positive feedback.
The opposite.
Oh, really?
Do the traffic we already have on eighty-two. Why would we want to have more traffic? And today I follow nothing but someone's. So it's like, ooh.
No matter what goes though, they're gonna have traffic.
Yeah.
Unless you make it a park.
I've heard of one.
Or in parks.
This evening, too.
Okay, excellent.
Or go back to.
Resolution twenty-seven then?
What are we gonna do with that, Madam President?
Do with?
With twenty-five. Are we gonna go to just a second reading or are we gonna go two and three?
I'd like to hear public, you know, what we hear at the public meeting. You know, if there's, if it's, there's a lot of sentiment one way or the other. Perhaps we could do a final vote on it today, but it's, uh, what do you, what's, what's the deal with the, the real estate company with the purchase?
The property owner I've been in contact with for the past several months, so I did let him know that this could potentially take some time.
Okay.
I don't think there's a rush that we have to go to a third read today, but.
Yeah, based on what we're doing and the amount of money that we're spending on the grant, we should go to three.
Yeah, if there's not a rush to it, then I.
We do a lot, one, two, three, but so we have time.
Second for sure.
Second question, Law Director.
Yes, sir.
Second reading. Do I have to second that?
Yes.
Yes. You can.
Does he have?
It's only the first.
I got cut off in the last.
Only number one.
Number one.
But you don't have to.
All right, Mr. Chaddick. The floor for the recreation center?
The floor for the recreation center is from nineteen ninety-nine. In two thousand when it was installed, it's very old. It is a slick surface, especially at the entryways and all of the major hallways of the facility. So we definitely are concerned with some safety hazards there. And the floor is deteriorating at this point, being a rec center, high-traffic area. And we've been looking into some various options. So what our intent is, is to go out for bid to get flooring options. We're looking at, not necessarily taking out what's there. We're going to, our intent is gonna be to lay flooring over what's existing, because that'll help diminish some of the cost for, for demo. So what we'd like to do is get some product put in that'll cover the entire lobby area. It'll cover hallways going to both the pool area and the locker room area. And then the activity room, the floor is falling apart in there. Literally chunks of tile are coming out in the activity room. So we're looking to get rubberized floor put in there that will hold up to an aquatic environment. And then upstairs on the bridge, that's also that nineteen nineties cafeteria flooring, which is also right up here outside this door. So we're looking to get a rubberized surface over that, because many people have been working out on that bridge and doing lunges and dynamic exercises. So it's become more of a workout area. And then the final pieces are hallways. Our stair treads are very old. So they're deteriorating as well. We wanna get those replaced, as well as each landing, which is also that old flooring. So that will basically cover everything within the building.
And having this expanded flooring, it's gonna give you more workout space on the, on the main floor, right?
Correct. We are going to have all of the workout areas squared out, so we actually have some symmetrical semblance there. But the equipment will be laid out a little bit differently, as far as just spreading it out a little bit more. With the new flooring concept, we would also put in designated pathways to walk through. So an LVT flooring, for instance, would have a different color that is going on the walkways that we want you guys to follow.
All right, is this gonna be worked into this, the changing of the front desk area, too?
Yes.
So it won't be, we put the new flooring down, then get rid of the front desk, or then move the front desk, and then it'll be one project? Hopefully.
I don't know for sure if it'll be one project. This'll definitely be flooring. What we'd like to do is also be able to minimize the front desk. And then as the new flooring goes in, have a front desk redone on top of the new flooring. I would love to say it's all gonna go down simultaneously with what it takes to get supplies in. I can't guarantee that. That would be the perfect way to do it, though. That is what we'd like to do. I don't wanna promise that upfront, though.
Five years ago. Quick question, are you doing anything with the track?
Nothing yet with the track.
And any plans to at some point?
That'll be within the next ten. Hopefully less than ten.
Lot of complaints on that one.
Do you have a projected budget for this?
We, we still have ninety-six thousand put away for, for a project like this. And then we still have some capital for this year that we haven't touched for remodeling.
This was in the budget and approved through the process.
Yeah.
Any further questions on that?
Are we, it appears to me like we're doing both authorizing the bid and authorizing the purchase regardless of what that bid comes back as. Is that how we're doing this?
No.
No.
No, just like always, you're authorizing the bid, it's back, and then we'll come back. And then you're back.
I was just trying to highlight we had money put away.
No, it just runs that way.
Oh, oh.
It wasn't you at all.
And enter into the, to enter into the contract. Well, good on that, then? I'd like to do one, two, three on that, if everyone's okay?
I'm good.
Thank you. All right, the bid for the fire panel. Anyone wanna talk about that, Mayor, Chief?
Sure.
Okay.
Once again, it's original to me, this building, nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven. And as Mr. Verris, every time we get a false alarm, reminds me that this building has more false alarms than any building we ever worked in. Probably a bigger problem than that in the rainstorm or snowstorm is the fact, as Chief Golden can attest to. At times, the alarm goes, the system has so many problems, it will literally every ten, thirty seconds chirp into the dispatcher's ears as whatever incident may be going on, it's beeping. They're trying to answer the phone, talk on the radio, take their foot to hit the reset button, the silence button. It's become operationally an issue in that regard. We have options. One, the only option is not to replace the devices in each room. But these devices are twenty-six years old. The devices need replaced also. The jail doors are included in it because of the jail standards. That's different than the key fives we use to move about the building. It simply won't control the doors in the jail. It's gotta be a system on and to itself, correct, John?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why the jail doors are included in also. All, over the years, we've also tied in water alarms and things of that nature to it. The specs that I'm working on are not quite done. Calls for non-proprietarian system, meaning that anyone could, you know, work on it right now, we're tied to Simplex. Simplex has to work on it. We had a fourteen thousand dollar bill last month, month before, for a problem we had, and we just need to get away from it. We do have pricing, and it ranged from, we did get three quotes, from eighty-six thousand dollars all the way up to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We suspected around one-twenty. And just so council knows, another project that we're working on and getting prices is evaluating on the sprinkler system. Once again, it's black bike, it rusts. It's been in this building twenty-six years. Walk around, look at ceiling tiles, look at the leaks. But unlike the alarm system, we can do that piecemeal as we go. This alarm system all has to be done at one time.
Thank you, Chief.
Any further questions? One, two, three on that?
It's only going on for bid, so.
Yeah.
Going after that.
Right.
And in this day and age, if you can get it out early, you have no clue when it's gonna be done.
Yeah, do you foresee a problem with getting?
Yes.
Wait, do you need chips?
Probably.
Forget it.
Yeah.
That's why there are no cars. No chips, no cars.
All right, Longwood Park Multi-Use Trail, uh, progress funding.
Mr. Gilroy.
Oh, Mr. Gilroy.
Ooh.
Yeah, so this piece of legislation is to authorize the grant application only at this time. Naturally, we would only consider going forward with the project if the grant application was successful. In the packet, there was the little data sheet to provide some additional information on this trail project. And the only other note for council is that this is actually after the fact legislation. The grant application was due on, back on April fifteenth. ODNR recognizes that they only open the window for a very short period of time for when the application opened, till when it was due. And they knew that, so they told everybody upfront, you can do your authorizing legislation after the fact, which we have to do. I'm not even sure, we actually had a council meeting in that little window, so. So that's where we're at today.
We have this in color. Because I see that there are secondary trail, main trail, and I would assume they might be in color, but I know which is which.
Well, it's pretty much the dotted line is what the, the trail plan is.
Deal with them all.
I run this one. Oh, there you go.
See? There is a color.
It is in color. But it's the dotted line. And just so everyone knows, we've talked about this extensively in Parks and Rec Commission, so it's not just, you know, coming out of left field. So they, you know, they voted on it and passed it and approved it. And we had lots of great conversations about which way the path should go and why the path goes the way it does. So, yeah, this is just to apply for the grant.
And I'd like to add that Joe's office has been successful in Glen Willow and getting ODNR dollars for trails. So I kinda nudged Joe and said, can you have them help us out here?
Thank you very much.
See if we can get some money.
Yeah, it's, it's a big amount, but it's really, really gonna add something amazing along with the park ID.
This has been in the works since this was built.
Yeah.
Because we used to play soccer from Broadview Heights when we go to the park.
Yeah. You have all this nice land. So they, you know, they've done a fantastic job working on the fields and everything and doing the trails inside the, inside the woods. So this is gonna be just a whole project to get trails outside.
Did you draw this?
In my spare time.
No, my question would be, is the one that proposed goes right by the ball fields? If there's a game in progress, I don't think you wanna lay there.
Yeah, so.
Only if you hit a home run.
Yeah, those are far.
It's way outside of that.
That's passive.
You wouldn't have to hit like a three-hundred-and-fifty yard shot.
I didn't print this one out. Do you know what that's on?
It only looks like.
No, it's, it's like seven hundred for the grant. It's, so the grant is for fifty percent?
Uh, the grant is for five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand. So any issues with one, two, three on this?
I'm good.
Thank you, folks.
Who do you think you would find out, Joe?
I'm sorry?
When do you think you would find out?
The results. I'm gonna guess past history, it's gonna be at least six months before.
Wow.
Yeah. I don't know why, but that's, past history tells us that.
Tiny window to get it done, that six-month.
It doesn't make sense.
That's life.
Well, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this. It really has been a group effort.
Glen Willows.
Keep your fingers crossed.
I've tried to get us to.
All right, the purchase of the, or the disposing of the property is pretty, pretty usual, pretty typical. Any questions on that? We don't need to hear an explanation. One, two, three on that, folks?
Just a note on that one. The ones that typically come before you also authorize the disposition if it doesn't sell through salvage or, you know, junking it. This one does not, because we believe that there is value in it. So the city would retain it if it doesn't sell for the minimum bid amount.
Excellent.
Are you talking about thirty?
Yeah, it's the old canine unit, right?
If nobody wants to drive. It seems other days.
Do we know if you're gonna list that open to anybody to bid on versus? Okay. Because some departments list that stuff restricted.
There's no, no restrictions on it for the ordinance, yes?
Resolution thirty-one, the confirming of Dr. Barian to the Senate Board of Health. You all got the resume, very impressive, very exciting that we're putting another doctor on the board. I remember when Dr. Arnold was appointed, they were very happy to have a doctor. I guess typically they don't have medical professionals on the board, so it's very nice for Dr. Barian to step up and volunteer for this. Is he gonna be here?
I don't think so.
All right. One, two, three on that?
No problem here.
All right, the purchase of the Chevy Tahoe's. Mayor or Chief?
Essentially, the sergeants will assume the Tahos. We have a lot of equipment up in the big room there. Chief, you can give better explanation.
Yeah, we just need to get him live for our, so it's, we're having the same problem that fire had, that service had with purchasing vehicles. So we wanna get this passed, get our name in there, and then when we get the car, we get.
Twenty-three.
Correct.
We got them or we got them on the list?
What about the place that one of the officers found, that Chris, uh, Festo found that had fifty-six of them coming in at one point, I think you told us?
They're coming in.
They're in the bill, they ordered them, they're in the bill.
So we have our eight?
Six. Six. Six Durangos and four.
Names are on them, it's just when they get built. Good luck.
Gotta get those changed.
We have order numbers for the Durangos. That's a plus.
Yeah, that's something.
So this, was this part of this year's, or is this another thing that we had to move up?
No, this is part of this year.
Any question on this? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have us do an amendment on this, because the, the published, yeah, the, the published, um, uh, ordinance is correct, the published agenda is correct, so we're just gonna do as is.
And Mr. Ventura will thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. I thought about sticking.
Just to confirm, we're not getting a bear cat?
We're not getting a hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollar bear cats or whatever?
That was the last page of the.
Yeah, that was the last page of it. I was like, well, this is.
Potential slot acquisition. It wasn't intended to be included in the request.
Because it would actually fit under what we're approving, so I just wanted to make sure that that's not.
But it was quite a large cost. I was like, oh, we get like a free four wheeler or something.
Awesome, that's like a service department. And the emergency basis is the same as the Durangos was?
Okay. And the other purchases we've done this year of vehicles?
But you're, so you're saying it's similar because we're not going off the bid?
Correct. You otherwise would be required to, if you like, determine that an actual emergency existed.
All right, the next one.
Should we one, two, three that?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that, sorry.
And then the next one is the Valley View and Highland Project.
So this is the one you may recall from, I don't know which of you were on council at that time, but we have, we got a grant and we're gonna put some dollars up towards that, too, but it's the turning lanes at Valley View and Highland, which is a very, very dangerous intersection and gets clogged up quite often. So they, they plan those out in five-year increments, and we're coming up on that very quickly, obviously, so this is the piece to get that moving. Did I miss anything, Mr. Gilroy?
No, I think you just about covered it. Council may recall this is planned for construction in two thousand and twenty-five.
So this would include turning lanes?
On all four.
On all four. Right now?
Yeah, all four.
I tried to hit five-thirty in the morning.
It's gonna be a big relief to have that finally done. So this is.
You can beat the someone, that's the other thing.
The first step.
It's scary. So I'm all one, two, three.
One, two, three on that?
Oh, yeah. Overdue.
Throw a four in there on that one.
And then resolution thirty-four is the one-year anniversary of Mr. Hoover, so we'll be voting on a pay raise for him, up to twenty-five dollars if we are.
Worth a cake.
I brought cupcakes, actually. Today's my birthday and it's John's. And it's John's one-year anniversary, so we have cupcakes, so everyone, and they're out in the other room, so please, everyone, take one on your way out or whatever, or two, whatever, if you like them. But, yeah, well, after it's been a year, John's done a fantastic job, so we're gonna go ahead and raise the pay on that, put on that.
Can I actually request a public hearing on this one?
We had it, we had it, you just failed to show.
Are you doing the most for the executive?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then a couple other items here. We have the junior council here. This is Vinnie and Noah, and what's her name?
Taylor.
Taylor, welcome, everyone. They'll be sitting up front and close, so nobody, nobody see anything weird while we're up there, but we're, we're excited to have them here. What career are you in, Taylor?
I'm a junior.
She's a junior, Vinnie's a junior, and Noah's a freshman, so hopefully we'll be seeing them, you know, after the summer. And then speaking of summer, we have to talk about our summer meeting schedule. So typically, we'll take one, one off in June, one off in July, and one off in August. Usually, we match, you know, we take off the seconds and, and the first. So anyone have any suggestions on that? Any of the staff have any suggestions on that?
They do.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Well, I'm willing to, we're willing to take it into consideration, if nothing else. Anyone have any, anything? Let's see, so we've got the ninth and twenty-third of June, the fourteenth and twenty-eighth of July, and the eleventh and twenty-fifth of August. Now, there, there is a touch of truck on the eleventh of August.
We usually do the, the last one in June and first one in July, just from.
This is, this is the two thousand twenty-two council. We're gonna do what the two thousand twenty-two council wants to do.
I guess I don't have input.
We can call.
You can input.
The last week, I made personal knockers. That way we're always back for later day in case the budget, we usually start talking the next year.
That would be good, then we wouldn't have to be here on the day of the.
Twenty eighth.
So the twenty-eighth and the eleventh? Not looking good to people?
You're saying cancel the twenty?
Cancel the twenty eighth and the.
We usually put two together so that we have.
Extended period of time.
By law, you have to have one.
Right.
You missed all of June.
So June, we, we can choose either one. Any suggestions for June? Anyone, anyone?
I'm thinking one in May, too. Put them together.
No.
As of now, I.
Thank you for your.
Was that fair?
Actually, is the ninth?
Which one?
In June. Is it ninth and twenty-third?
Yeah.
Let's cancel the twenty-third.
I was gonna say I wouldn't mind canceling the ninth, but I can, I don't really have a big preference.
I'm already gonna miss the twenty-third and the fourteenth. Assuming, yeah.
So that's another option we have, is to cancel the twenty-third and the fourteenth. And then.
But then you gotta bring the twenty-eighth back.
That's fine.
If you're doing July.
This is a group effort.
I'll be tripping, so.
You'll be traveling in July? So you don't think you'll be here on the twenty-eighth? You don't think you'll be here on the twenty-eighth, you're not sure?
It's a date.
But Dave definitely won't be here on the eleventh and the, for the fourteenth.
The eleventh, so.
No, I'm.
Sorry, sir, twenty-third and fourteen, yeah.
So he definitely won't be here on the twenty-third and the fourteenth. So if.
Well, why don't we cancel the twenty-third of June, since he'll be.
Okay. Twenty-third of June, and then, so you're not sure about the twenty-eighth, June?
Yeah, because it depends when I get back from Boston.
Dave is definitely for sure not gonna be here on the fourteenth.
If we, if we cancel the fourteenth, that's a very large chunk between June and July. I don't, I don't know if that's a pro or a con, just pointing that out.
We've always had one set up, and then there was like six weeks.
That, that would do it.
Yeah, we always have one, though.
And we can always be called, you know, we can always call an emergency if something comes up, right? If something comes up.
Well, I'm gonna do it now.
It will.
Drew, you still have the. There you go.
I'll send the fire trucks to pick you up.
Well, cancel the fourteenth, leave the twenty.
You'll make it work. Got me right, because Dave's definitely not gonna be there, so I think you can.
That one, I'm in somewhere in North Carolina, I forget what day.
So did we land on the twenty-third?
Twenty-third of June, no, twenty-third of June, cancel, cancel the fourteenth of July, and which meeting would everyone prefer to cancel in August? The eleventh, we got one vote from the peanut gallery from the eleventh. Oh, two votes.
I'm not, I don't have a preference, I'm just gonna point out, if we do the twenty-fifth, that gives us another big chunk between the fourteenth and twenty.
No, we're canceling, we will be there on the twenty-eighth. We're doing one big chunk.
Right, I meant between the.
We'll be there on the twenty-eighth, we'll cancel the eleventh, and we'll be there on the twenty.
Never mind.
Okay, so August eleventh, we'll cancel. We'll make, we'll make friends in the staff. Excellent.
So what are those dates?
Twenty-third of June.
Twenty-third, fourteenth.
Fourteenth of July, eleventh of August.
That you're canceling. Do we need to make a motion on the gun?
So, yes, I will make, well, I'm gonna do the motion for the.
They're gonna cancel us.
The executives, do you wanna do these?
Sure. Is one motion or three?
One motion. Yeah.
Is there any interest to do the twenty-sixth of May also for memorial day weekend?
No.
I heard the chief. Oh, there he is.
It's a great recommendation.
I mean, I, I don't know what we have coming on the docket, but I just, let's just start summer early.
As long as I've been here, we only did that once.
Yeah, I, I don't.
We only did maybe once.
It's twenty-two's council, so.
We can always.
I'm not in favor of canceling it, but it's.
You can cancel it, and then I add.
You can always cancel it at the twelfth. I mean, it's Labor Day we do, so people may not want to.
Well, we can re, you know, see whatever is on everybody's dockets coming.
If you cancel that one, you're not gonna have another one till the. Oh, no, you have one on the ninth.
We'll be okay, we can be one, one per month, which is the requirement. We'll be okay. We can be one, one per month, which is the requirement.
Right.
So, the motion, as it stands right now, will just be for June, July, and August. And 23rd, 14th, and 11th.
Yes, sir.
I think before we cancel, maybe we gotta see what could possibly come on the docket, because once we get to September, October, we're gonna have one in November and only one in December also, and as Jan says, if we gotta work on the budget also.
Well, we gotta have a budget. I mean, we haven't had any. We need to start the budget.
Yeah, we can't, we can't go down to this one for every, you know, year.
I, I would, I wouldn't be in favor.
Oh, the charter's so... So let's do the charter.
We like, we like to be extra.
Hold up, find the 12, guys. Long enough for your...
Yeah.
Just lay the request.
Get your stuff in, and then maybe we'll have a special surprise for you.
Deadline, hold it up. Don't slack on that deadline.
Yes. All right, anything else, anyone would like to, or do you wanna bring up that letter? And I guess there isn't very much to bring up.
I can respond to her. Better.
Okay, so we have our public hearing. Oh, there's also gonna be an executive session, and I've got the language for that, so we will do that at the end of the meeting.
Would you like to real quick explain that for our junior council?
Oh, thank you very much. The executive session. Council is allowed to have a closed-door meeting that the public can't be privy to. On, there's what, five subjects that we can have, three subjects?
There's eight, technically.
Okay, so one is personnel, like...
I have close to you, is it?
One is personnel, so a matter of hiring, firing folks. Another one is purchase of property, legal matters that we can speak with the lawyer privately, and it's called an executive session. And basically, we leave the floor there, come in here, we speak privately, and we can go back on the floor, and then usually typically, we just adjourn the meeting. So that's what we'll be doing today.
And you cannot discuss anything else?
Yeah, secret stuff. We can't discuss it. We can't discuss it with our friends, our neighbors, our, our spouses. But usually, usually the, you know, what the topic is ends up...
Traditionally, when we adjourn to come in here, everybody leaves, because it's like, all we're gonna do is come out to adjourn.
Yeah, when we adjourn, when we leave that floor and come in here, so that's just a technical.
Only one time, so that we can go out there and take a home on something.
The April 26 council meeting, first on our agenda is a public hearing. Relax, I got this. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Okay, and first up, we have the purpose of our hearing. Mr. Hoover, if you can read the ordinance number 25.
Sure. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a real estate purchase agreement for the real property known as permanent parcel number 33-11015, the amount of $625,000, and appropriating that amount.
So I'll give the brief explanation of why this came about and what we're intending to do. Some time ago, we had the Future Growth Committee that developed a plan for the future for the city, and there's a lot of things in here that had never been implemented, and I've kind of picked this document up, and I've done a lot of that. So, some examples of that would be the mural that we did on Route 82 underneath the bridge where the high school students painted it. We're doing new signage coming in and out of the town where it says, "Welcome to the City of Macedonia." The big one in there is what we're here to talk about this evening, is the property over on Park Avenue, between Park Avenue and Valley View. So in their proposal, I think we were gonna put this up on there, weren't we? If not, that's fine. They proposed the area of, of Park Avenue to have like a town center district. And over time, there's been a lot of folks that have been interested in that piece of property. Now, what's been talked about in the proposals that I've had come across my desk of late was a trucking terminal, something that the city itself was not crazy about, but as we all know, the city doesn't control the properties. When someone purchases a property, as long as they're within zoning, they can do whatever they want there. Now, in my mind, and I'm sure as many of the councillors here would agree, we don't wanna have a trucking terminal in that area, because not only is the traffic somewhat heavy, but a trucking terminal there would not be conducive to what the vision of the city is moving forward. So in talking with the property owner, we did an assessment on the property, and the value came back at $675,000. In a preliminary negotiation with the property owner, I've got them down to $625,000. So what this would do for us is give us leverage. So if we wanna have the proper town district there, and just to be clear, this is something that's gonna occur over time, because in the plan, it took that entire area all the way up to Route 82 and had that whole thing encompassed in there, including eliminating Park Avenue. But this is the first step to get that. So if we can get the property for $50,000 less than it's worth, it gives us that leverage to do that. What's the advantage to the city? Well, the Future Growth kinda set a path for us, and all I did was take their suggestion, and I'm starting to ask council if they wanna move forward with that. That's what this is all about. The key to it all is simply this. I'm not using taxpayer contributed dollars to purchase this property. What I'm using is the sale of the property that I got for nothing, which was the Bedford Anorizing Site, and I'm gonna take those dollars and invest them into this, if approved. So, at some point, the juice will be worth the squeeze, because we can get the value back out of that property no matter what, whether it be via tax dollars being generated from there, the sale of the property, or giving incentives to develop the property. In the short time that I've been the mayor here, I've, I've talked with some developers, and I haven't had a whole lot of interest in a developer coming in to kind of look at this vision and enact a lot of that. But if we have control of the property, it gives us the ability to incentivize it, and that's kind of what I'm looking at for the future. That's really it in a nutshell. So I guess at this point, I'll entertain the public. I know we have one person...
There is a, there's a correspondence.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I just received one email from a resident. Says, "Hello, can't make the meeting, but would like to share, purchasing the land is a great idea, but the scary part is when the city says, quote, 'downtown retail area.' This would be a huge mistake to create this and not attract local businesses. If this becomes an extension of all the chains on 82, that will be so disappointing to the residents and not a good long-term goal. Thanks, Lori Byrne."
So, I'm glad we got that, because what my intention would be, to be the smaller mom-and-pop type of operations, I don't foresee, and again, this gives us the control to say that. We could have the Casa De Angelos, the Zucchini Sushi's, and that type of thing in that area, or, or small shopping areas. So, kinda like what Hudson has, I don't wanna compare us to Hudson, because we're completely different, but a smaller town square, we can make it our own. We can make this thing whatever we want Macedonia to look like in the future. So, my intention would be to have the mom-and-pop type shops there, not the, the big box stores, per se. And on our public comments sheet this evening, we have Mr. Wallenhurst.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Wallenhurst. I sit on the Planning Commission, and I'm 100% in favor of this. I think it'll be a great addition to our city. I think it would be well-used, and I think the vision for what that property could be, based on what you just spoke of, Mayor, is, is great. I think that it's something that our city is, is kind of missing. We have so many other great assets around the city. Having a nice downtown district or place for people to gather, I think is a great idea, especially with the city being right here. Being able to make that connectivity right there, I think would be huge. So, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Also on the sign-in sheet is Mr. McRitchie, but I don't think you're here to talk about that.
I'm here. You, in your recap, you addressed where I was going to comment on.
Okay. You sure? Okay.
Another point I wanted to make, let me see this. So, this map is on the Future Growth Committee, and this was prepared by Kevin Westbrook, who's also on the Planning Commission. It, it's, it shows a circle of where, so this orange part in the middle is the, the area of Park Avenue and Valley View, and then the circle shows walking distance. So this would be a 10-minute walk to the site, and you could see all the houses within it, and then a 30-minute walk to the site. There's a ton of houses in it, because it goes through the Crowe Development, even the Bird Street Developments, part of the Summer and Waters Development. So it's, it really would be a downtown area for us, as opposed to a lot of the businesses that come through, like the residents said about big box stores and stuff like that. That, a lot of that stuff is for people that are driving through, being that we are the crossroads of Northeast Ohio. It's, it's not, you know, KFC wasn't put on the corner so that people from Macedonia drive to KFC. It was put there so that people driving through from Twinsburg to Route 8 could stop at KFC. So something like this would be, you know, pointed development towards serving the people of Macedonia. So, and, and as the mayor pointed out, too, and I really can't emphasize this enough, that buying this property does not mean 100% that we're going to do this. Buying the property gives us the ability to even start talking about the development. We can have another committee set up, like we did the Future Growth Committee, that can, can help push us towards what we wanna see as residents in this downtown district. But it absolutely can't happen unless we purchase this property and gets, and get the ball rolling.
And to add to that, this is the first big piece to accomplishing this task. So if we can acquire this property, it's the first huge step of probably 100, but it gives us an ability to start working towards it, which would be the intention that I would have, based on what the Future Growth Committee has proposed.
Anyone else on council have, have anything to say, since we don't have any more public comments?
Yeah, I, I would just add that I think that one of the options that we have is if we do go down this road and we do approve it, if for any reason, we decide down the road that we don't wanna continue down this path, we always have the option to sell the property, possibly for a profit.
Absolutely.
And if there's anybody that watches this online, and they wanna give us feedback, we aren't voting on this tonight. There's, I believe we'll end up probably voting it on, on it at the next council meeting. So there's still time to give your, your input to council. We can be contacted through the, the council clerk.
Yes.
Anyone else?
No, no use in repeating once it's already been set.
Okay, well, that will close our public hearing for this evening, so at 7:00.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Take a second.
I did second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is adjourned at, I cannot see my phone.
7:27.
7:27. We will start the council meeting at 7:30 sharp.
Thank you, everyone.
Hello, and welcome to the April 28 council meeting. It is 7:30 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Now I ask American Legion Chaplain Tom O'Brien to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, we pray thee to give guidance to our elected officials, so that they may work in a harmonious and honest manner. Give our elected officials the courage to work together for the common good of our community, and provide their constituents with the necessary services that they have come to expect. We ask the Almighty God to watch over our police and fire personnel, for there are first responders to crises that may arise at any time during the day or night. Keep them safe, so at the end of their workday, they may safely return to their homes and families. We further ask Almighty God that you keep a watchful eye over all our city employees, those civil servants, whose work is done for the benefit of our community. And in closing, O God of Mercy, we ask for thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors, who may be suffering from mental or physical disabilities. Cheer them and bring them the blessing of health and happiness. Amen.
Amen.
And now please face the flag and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, first up on the agenda, I have a proclamation this evening, and I'll ask our folks that are coming in today to come up to the front here with me, please. Well, here today, we have a couple gentlemen from our wrestling team that have had a heck of a season, right? I'll give a little, little bit of the stats that you approved. I know we have to go right. Jeremy Olssko, eighth grade state runner-up, ninth grade district qualifier, 10th grade district, district qualifier, 11th, fourth at states, a record of 130 and 29, pretty impressive. He has a GPA of 4.358, that's amazing. Second team, also bourbon football, all Ohio for wrestling, and he also worked at Sharpscapes Landscaping, that's a lot. And Israel Petit, seventh grade, state qualifier, eighth grade, state qualifier, ninth, state qualifier, 10th, seventh at state, with a record of 68 and 21, very impressive again. Also a scholar athlete, second team, also bourbon league, all Ohio, two-time letter winner, honorable mention at also bourbon, and a letter winner, and martial artist. Good stuff. So, I have a proclamation for you guys today, and it reads, whereas we acknowledge that active participation in that organized athletics is influential to building good character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas in order to excel in any sport, a young person must demonstrate an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas a vivid example of this has been brought to our attention by the achievements of the Nordenia High School Wrestling Team, who was 14 and all in dual meets, had nine district qualifiers, made returning, two state placers, and while competing among the finest athletes, we give special attention to Jeremy Olssko and Israel Petit, who made all Ohio and all state among many other awards. Now therefore, I Nicholas Molnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2022, to be Nordenia High School Wrestling Day in our city, and extend them by personal congratulations to those, and those of all our citizens who appreciate the team's athletic prowess, and wish them success in future competitions. Very impressive, guys. Thank you. And also this day, Assistant Coach Lara.
Yes, case in mind.
If you wanna speak to your gentleman student, I appreciate it.
Well, first off, thank you for having us here today. Appreciate you being a part of this. I appreciate that you recognize the art, student athletes. It means a lot to them. They faced a lot over the last few years, just being able to participate in sports and go to school. And we have been lucky enough that we have some wonderful administrators at our high school, and we have an amazing athletic director who has made, you know, athletics possible for our community. These guys work hard every day. They give everything they've got. I've seen them exhausted from putting in the work and the time, and still being able to come in and do their studies. They are very, very impressive, gentlemen. We are very proud of you. Thank you.
You guys are welcome.
You're gonna make a speech now. I'll tell a little bit on yourselves, please.
First, I wanna thank my coaches, because they push me every day. They give me something to work for. And I set a goal before every season, and I work to achieve that goal. And without my coaches, I wouldn't have a guy to help me through it, because it gets hard. So, I just wanna thank my coaches and my girlfriend, Jeremy, who pushes me every day.
Can I add something on Izzy?
Yeah.
So Israel, this year, the very first tournament of the year, he's in the finals of this tournament, and he's doing very well against the kid. And the kid went to throw him, and when he went down, his elbow completely snapped out of place. It was off to the side. He gutted it out. He trained what he could for about, what, six weeks?
Eight weeks.
About six. And then he came back down, and was still able to work his way up to an all-state honors and placing in the state tournament. So that was very impressive, as a sophomore, by the way.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Olssko. I just wanna thank my parents and coaches and the council for recognizing us. And like Izzy said, I set a goal every year, and our coaches just like, will work to help us achieve that. You know, they'll bring guys in, they help us train every day, and they just do the best for us. So, thank you.
And Jeremy is one of the best leaders we have in the room, as far as even football and wrestling. He, amazing athlete, works so hard, such a great student. A lot of the younger kids have looked for him for guidance, and we have a very tough team, and we're looking forward to making you guys practice next season, too, so.
Also, and I put every sport under the sun, I will say that the training for wrestling is hardly and most difficult thing in the world. I'll never forgive it one time. And I give you guys a lot of credit, because I crawl out of the gym every time I do it. So you guys get a lot of credit for your, your mission.
They love our practices every day.
Well, I'm sure they love. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. Thanks today, and congratulations.
I don't know which one is wrong. Doing your martino.
Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of both the Thursday, March 24 regular council meeting, and the Tuesday, April 5 special council meeting.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is public comments. I know we kinda already went through it, and we didn't have another sheet, so I'll extend that out to the audience. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment this evening? Don't everybody jump at once. All right, hearing none, we'll go right into correspondence from the clerk.
None.
Okay, then we'll go right into pending of new legislation, starting with ordinance number 25.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 25, 2022, for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a real estate purchase agreement for the real property known as permanent parcel number 33-11015, for the amount of $625,000, and appropriating that amount.
And this is the piece of legislation, we have the public hearing, so I won't belabor the point any further on that one. Resolution number 27.
I move to offer resolution 27, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to prepare plans, bids, and design specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to enter into a contract for the City of Macedonia Recreation Center Flooring Remodel Project.
Director Chaddick?
Thank you, Mayor. For this project, we are looking to go to bid to get the main flooring replaced in the recreation center, so it'll be the downstairs lobby area, which currently has the original 1990s cafeteria flooring in it, and we are looking to replace all of that. Also, the potential removal of the front desk with having the new flooring going back to the locker rooms, the pool area as well. Our activity room would have the replacement of the broken tile flooring to a rubberized floor, which can hold up to an aquatic environment. Our bridge upstairs that also has the cafeteria flooring on it would be replaced with rubberized flooring, and then we would be looking to install new stair treads within both of our stairwells, as well as replace both landings in each of the stairwells with this project.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post resolution number 27, 2022, according to law.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 27 carries. Resolution 28.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 28, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the city administration to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for replacing... and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for replacement fire alarm/jail door control system within City Hall.
Chief Ripley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is replacing the fire alarm in this building. We have numerous false alarms on a monthly basis. It also controls all of the doors within the jail. It's a proprietary system for the jail also, and one of the bigger problems is communications, dispatchers. There's a panel in there, and every time the system has any kind of problem, it beeps, and one of the faults it goes into, it'll beep an alarm every 10 to 30 seconds. And it can be a very hectic place, and it's very disturbing to their work, and it's necessary to get it replaced. You replace the smoke alarms at home every 10 years, they've been in place 26 years, so it's a necessary upgrade.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Recognizing, we want to keep everyone safe.
Yes.
Whether you're a visitor or whether you're an employee, I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution number 28, 2022, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 28 carries. Resolution 29.
I move to offer resolution 29, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the mayor to take such steps necessary to apply for 2022 program funding from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the Longwood Park Multi-Use Trail Project.
Director Gelati?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. This piece of legislation is to authorize the grant application only at this time. If successful, then we would move forward with the project. We'll let the council know the results when we get them.
And just to add to that, it's a grant for a half a million dollars, and if you look on the screen, the dotted lines are the intention of those trails that they are wishing to have completed, so it gives us a little bit better perspective of what is desired. Any further discussion?
Just to note, these trails, if you can't really see what is on the screen, these trails will be outside of the woods. We were working on some fantastic trails inside of the woods, so this will go around the perimeter of the north half of the park and around the fishing pond. So, that's the difference, and these will be paved, right? Asphalt paved and wide enough for bikes to pass.
Wide enough for all.
Okay, so that's why there's quite a large price tag on this, but it's something that the Parks and Rec Commission has been working on for quite a while, so we're very excited and hope that we can get this grant, and we thank Mr. Gelati and his team for working on getting this grant for us.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass resolution 29, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 29 carries. Resolution 30.
Yes, I move to offer resolution 30, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the City of Macedonia Police Department in accordance with City of Macedonia Codified Ordinance, Section 121.05, and Ohio Realized Code, Section 721.15.
So essentially, this piece of legislation is to put the old K-9 vehicle, which was high mileage and falling into disrepair, up on Gov. Deals for an auction to get rid of it. Does that cover everything, Chief?
That's correct.
Not too complicated. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I would offer resolution 30, 2022, and move to adopt it and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 30 carries. Resolution 31.
I move to offer resolution number 31, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution confirming the appointment by the Mayor of Dr. Kenneth D. Varian as the representative of the City of Macedonia to the Summit County Board of Health.
So essentially, we had a resignation. The city has someone who's on the Board of Health for Summit County that represents us. The resignation obviously opened that up. I reached out to Dr. Varian, as I had met him over the summer, probably gave me the most impressive resume I've ever seen in my entire life. I think it was about 15 pages of accomplishments and things that he's done within his life to get to where he's at, and I think it's quite impressive, to say the least. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number 31, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 31 carries. Ordinance number 32.
Yes, Mayor, I move to, for ordinance 32, 2022, and offer it for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Tim Lally Chevrolet for the purchase of four Chevrolet Tahos, the City Police Department, in an amount not to exceed $248,000 without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
Chief Golden?
Yeah, this is for four new Tahos. They could be the supervisory vehicles, their larger trunk to carry some equipment we'd prefer to have in the vehicles, and this is to get in line. Everybody knows there's issues getting vehicles, and so this is just to get in line, so we don't know when these will come in.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 32, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 32 carries. Ordinance number 33.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 33, 2022, for its first and second, third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to complete and execute the preliminary legislation and agreements as mandated by ODOT for Project Som Highland Valley View Road, PID number 113161.
Mr. Gelati?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. This is to get the process started for our big intersection project, Island Valley View Intersection, which we've talked about a little bit before. The project is to create left and right dedicated turn lanes in all four directions, brand-new high-tech traffic signal to get traffic to flow through that intersection in a much better manner, when complete construction scheduled for 2025.
Can't come soon enough, and I know I get this complaint a lot about that in town, that intersection is absolutely terrible, so I cannot wait for this to come into fruition and hope that council supports this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pass and post according to law, ordinance number 33, 2022, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 33 carries. Resolution number 34.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 34, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution amending resolution number 30, 2021, relative to the compensation for the position of Clerk of Council.
President Brant?
We've had Mr. Hoover here as our clerk for a year. He's passed the probationary period with flying colors. We could not be happier to have found him or for him to have found us. I think that everyone on council would agree that he is a gem, and you know, it seems like we were just recently celebrating the 30th anniversary of our previous clerk, Josephine R.C.C., and it's so nice to feel that we really have someone that has our back, like Mr. Hoover does. So, we really appreciate your work, and this resolution hopefully shows that, and thank you very much, and happy anniversary.
Thank you.
And I'll, from the administrative side, I will say that we've had nothing but great dealings with you, and we appreciate every time you help us with things that we need, and it's been a great go, so thank you.
My pleasure.
And also, I'd like to thank Mrs. Tully for getting Mr. Hoover set up, she was president when he began, and she really showed him the ropes and stood in for him before he even started, so we really appreciate that, and we appreciate the help of all the staff in getting John up and running and working with him.
I'd also like to say, John is a go-getter from the beginning. If I said, this is how we do something, he not only understood how we did it, he also went back and read old minutes, old legislation, to be able to understand how this actually is done, and he took a lot of time to study what goes on within the city, and then reached out when it was appropriate. Never hesitates to ask a question, but has a lot of initiative, and that's what we appreciate. Thank you.
And I think today you had your first clerk training, right?
Yeah.
You're on your way towards certification.
Yes.
Fantastic.
And even went back and watched the old YouTube video of many of our spirited council meetings that some of you were involved with. What is your pleasure?
I think, Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 34, 2022, and pass and post the same according to law.
There you go. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 34 carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, I have a motion. I would like to move that we cancel the council meetings on June 23, July 14, and August 11.
For summer recess.
For summer recess, thank you.
For summer recess. Just to make it clear, the charter says that we need to have at least one meeting per month, so we will be sticking to that in June, July, and August, but typically, we do take some time off and have a big chunk of time to give the staff the ability to schedule their vacations and not miss council meetings, so that's what the motion is, and I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move right into my mayor's report. First and foremost, I want to welcome Director Wilson to the team. This is his first official council meeting, and hopefully, we haven't scared you away yet with everything we have going on, but I think he's a great addition. We've already had, what, four days of fun to take everything in, and I think, again, you're going to be a great fit to the team, and we're happy to have you here, so thank you.
Did he bring that truck with him? Did you bring that with you? Thanks!
You're stealing the thunder here.
Oh, sorry.
That was number two on my list. You may also notice outside, we have two of our new plow trucks out there. They're a very versatile pieces of equipment, because they are the hook lifts, so you can put different apparatus on there to utilize them for the different things that we do within the service department. So, applause to former director, Nonavange, for coming up with that idea, to have that versatility, as opposed to having one truck that was isolated to one specific thing. So, you may notice that there's a bed laying down in the hook lift underneath it, so it kind of gives you an idea. The biggest thing about those, and what's going on in society right now, what's most frustrating to everyone in the world, it took two years to get those trucks in front of us. And of course, we get them, I hope, after winter's over. I hope. This is Ohio, you never know. I hope that warm weather and sunshine's coming our way, but we'll see.
Ask the chief about what he sent out today. The freeze warning.
Freeze warning. Nixol sent us a freeze warning.
We didn't get it, Nixol. We have a freeze warning for tonight, so hopefully, we don't have to use that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I would like to thank Service Supervisor Steve Zernak and yourself for having hands-on and getting those two vehicles prepared and in service as quick as possible. I had a small hand in that, and I know for a fact that you guys were on scene trying to get those things in service very quickly. Thank you both very much.
Well, again, you're stealing my thunder. I was going to thank him next. Mr. Zernak has done an amazing job with the absence of a director, and I can't tell you that gentleman's put in a lot of hours to keep that department running and running well and getting things done. I mean, you look around the town and all the things that we're doing, I can't thank you enough for everything you've done to keep us together and keep that department running efficiently as you have, so thank you very much for that.
I'm just glad he's going to stop coming to my office asking for money. Keep lots of money.
Third thing on my list is I want to wish President Brant a happy birthday. Today is her actual birthday, so happy birthday to Ms. Brant.
Yes, 21 times 2.
It just goes to show her dedication. Even on her birthday, she's here with us. There's much better things.
Yeah, because I had so much better things to do.
And last on my list, I want to welcome this evening our junior city council. So, what had happened in the past, I had reached out to the schools, because I've always felt like we haven't had enough involvement from our students in the schools and being a part of what we do. And I had the opportunity to meet with them this week. They put it out to all the students who was interested. We have four students from Nordonia that took up the cause, that want to be here and be a part of this. I did warn them that this can be incredibly boring, and this can also be incredibly exciting. So, I want them to understand what we do, and maybe even have them want to be involved in this, because I think we need more youth involved in what we're doing. The ultimate goal for me personally would be to have one of them, or any young person, to run for city council. I think we need more of the youthful perspective, which is what I've asked them to bring to the table. Now, this thing's going to evolve as time goes on. We're not really sure yet. All the things we want to do, we've pulled some different things from junior city councils in other communities. I gave them a copy of that for them to look at, but I want to make it our own. I'm never one to just take someone else's footprint and make it ours, so we've talked a lot about what we want to do. In our first meeting, we established a president and vice president, and unfortunately, the president, Kirsten, could not make it this evening, but we have Vice President Root here with us. We also have Nola Walton and Vincent Milliotta. He goes by Vinnie, which makes it easy, because we've got a Vinnie over here, so. But what we are working to accomplish is have more meetings, get the input from the students as to things that we're doing, because a lot of what we do affects them. And I also asked them in the meeting, and this is no offense to anyone sitting up here, I said, could you name one council person? And they all looked at me like, what? Who? So, it just further goes to show that a lot of kids, and even the adults, don't know how much the local government touches you. I mean, the state and the federal obviously affects your pocket a lot, but we're the ones that affect you more than anything, because everything you do in your daily life, we see and touch. So, I'm trying to get that through to them to understand what we do, and it's going to be a process to get the understanding of what the city does, and we're also going to probably have at some point, I'm going to ask the principal if I can have you guys for a half a day to spend with me, to take you through City Hall, see all our operations, and understand the complexities of what we do within a given day, so fingers crossed, I'll get you out of school for half a day, and I'll even buy you lunch. So, at this time, I'll ask you to come up to the mic, introduce yourselves, and another piece of what they've done up to this point is they've developed a mission statement. I didn't want to have any hand in that. They developed this on their own, so very proud of the accomplishment so far in the one week that we've had this up and running.
Nice.
I'm Taylor Root. I'm the vice president, and I'm going to begin by reading our mission statement. Our objective is to provide a greater understanding of the Macedonia City's council responsibilities and role in our community to our peers and other adolescents. Currently, there is a noticeable disconnect between the public's knowledge and collaboration, more so in the younger generations, when it relates to our city council and political representation in our city. We believe that by increasing adolescent participation, it will allow for stronger government relations and the beginning of a more powerful political future.
Thank you.
That's amazing. Good job.
Fantastic.
My name is Nola Walton. I am a freshman at Nordonia High School, and I'm really hoping that this is going to be really fun. We're like...
We're going to try to make it fun. I can't guarantee that piece.
I'm Vinnie Milliotta, or my real name is Vincent, but I go by Vinnie. I'm a junior over at the high school. I have an interest in politics and law, so sort of this stuff, and besides this, I've done mock trial and stuff in the school.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are all three of these people, or all four of these people, actual residents of Macedonia?
They are. All four are residents of Macedonia. Now, when we started it, I didn't want to make it just to that, because as we all know, we have a collaboration with our neighboring communities, but I open it up to all, but fortunately, all four were Macedonia residents.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome. And also, council, I'll ask for your input too as this thing progresses. I mean, this is my daily job, so I have more time to commit to try and work with them. But I want your input as well because they're the junior council. But I spend a lot of time sitting in your seats as well, so I have a pretty good idea. But I also ask for your input on what we can do to help grow that and keep them maintaining their grades in sports and everything else they do, not trying to overwhelm them, and obviously, not trying to embarrass you guys in any way. I just want you to learn what we do, and thank you again for being here. Appreciate it.
I would think one of them would be to work on the future growth.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
When we're talking about this piece of property over here, and that's what we have on the agenda for tonight, you're going to be here hopefully 20, 30 years. We want your input of what should it look like? Should we go forward with it? I mean, you're important to letting us know for the future. I'm not moving anywhere, but at some point, I won't be here. So you're very important for the future.
And your input on restaurants is very important, too. I want to hear from you because I get complaints about restaurants all the time.
Mayor, you don't control what restaurants are here.
I don't. I don't. But we could try. I can make phone calls, right? The one that's most perplexing is IHOP when a lot of folks complained about it. And I don't know who's mad about pancakes, but pancakes, it's not a bad thing. You put syrup on them, they taste delicious. And apparently, they have yogurt.
There you go.
Wouldn't be what I would get there, but whatever suits you. Last but not least is the mayor's court report. For March of 2022, the revenue was $38,504.90. All right, next on the...
What else?
Don't drive distracted. Put the phones down. Drive the car. Thank you.
The other thing is, your cars come with turn signals for a reason. Please use your turn signals. We've got people coming over towards the commons. They're just going into the lanes without any turn signals, so they have no clue what they're doing. And there were two today that went near Mrs. as I was driving over there because... And the same, it's not just cars, it's just semis, too. So please F into your blue.
Lose your turn signals.
I don't think cars come with a sound shock. Have to figure that out.
He also doesn't want you to ride in the left-hand lane.
Oh, that's a conversation for another day. I'm not going on that tangent. Thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission had our April meeting last week at the Rec Center. Basically, we talked more about, we talked about the flooring, which we've already discussed, and the trail project. I think we put the finishing touches on that. So once again, thank you, Mr. Gelati and Mr. Chadda for getting that together. And we, I do want to remind people that you can be a lifeguard at age 15. So if anyone is looking to do a job at age 15, check out the Rec Center. They're looking for lifeguards. And that was something that was stressed in the meeting, but we're looking for people to hire at the Rec Center. And that's all. Our next meeting will be the third Wednesday in May, which is the 18th. So you know, you guys are welcome to come from the junior council. It is a public meeting. Anyone can come sit in. It's in the activity room at the Rec Center at 6:00 PM, the third Wednesday of every month. So that's all for that.
The cemetery board will hold, come to the city council. We always host the annual meeting. The cemetery is in Northville, but it includes Sagmoor, Northville Village, Northville Center in Macedonia. So we, as all of us, as Macedonia, as well as every other representative vote on the overall budget. So I believe we have that set now, John?
Yes.
But then it... Okay. Say it again?
May 12th.
Next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garvis, would you please enlighten them on the JED meeting, please? Because my phone is not in my position. It is on Mr. Hoover's desk.
I believe we met on April 5th. Is that incorrect? Did we meet on April 5th?
Yes.
Yeah, we met with the other community members from the JED community, or from the JED and the Conservancy District, and we went over a variety of topics that you caught me off guard on and I can't come up with.
Between the two of you? Can you remember anything?
Well, we're still talking about the...
Mounted dirt.
Mounted dirt. You know, that's behind the Great Escape. Talking about the new build that is going to be starting shortly where Golden Corral is.
Right. And there was some discussion about the drainage issues with some flooding that was coming out behind, I think, Paco's Mexicano's through a drainage pipe that goes from the wetlands that make up that property behind Target and Lowe's and drain towards the highway and then go underneath it.
And last but not least, Myers.
Myers. And the traffic looks...
The conversation about Myers, its entrance, its exit, not going to happen as far as there's not going to be another right in, right out on Route 8. In that area, the entrances and exits will be on Route 82.
Yeah, ODOT's not in support of the right in, right out. They're talking. There's nothing definitive at this point, and they said best case scenario, we might see a building in two years. So...
But it's not off the table.
Remind everybody where it's at.
Where it will be.
Because the discussion disappears for a while.
It's behind Spitzer.
And it's behind the car vehicle.
Right.
So those people live on, now you are going to have a great view of the back of Myers.
So they want the right in, right out. That's been talked about a lot, but contact your ODOT representative.
How long did it take us, Mayor and Mrs. Tully? How long did it take us to get the one by colors?
Almost 10 years. 10 years?
10 years.
Yeah.
If not more?
So don't look for that soon.
And that was basically led by one of the business owners. They did it all.
So I was asked to explain what the JED is to you, in case you're not familiar with that. The, basically, the shopping center that makes up everything from Giant Eagle to Chick-fil-A and Lowe's and Target is predominantly land that was in Northfield Center Township. And Mark, correct me if I say anything wrong here, please. And a township cannot collect income tax from employees, but a city can. And a JED is a joint economic development district where a city and a township can work together so that the income tax revenues from all of the employers inside that property can be split 50-50 between the two communities. Did I do a good job with that?
Yeah, or whatever the contractual...
Whatever it is, right. But ours is 50-50, right?
Right. Encourage economic development, and a portion of the proceeds can be utilized to maintain a district as well.
Right. So that's what the JED is. If you guys have any questions about the JED that that didn't explain, feel free to ask any of us, and we'll be more happy to explain it to you.
Ages ago, that was supposed to be a mall, just like all the malls that are now gone.
Phew! Dodged a bullet.
And the mayor at that time worked it out to be more of that kind of law. But it would have been closed by now, but it'd become a mall.
Or sunk into the ground.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move into department reports. And first up is Director Wilson. But I will defer that to the former interim director, Mr. Zernak, because he's four days in, and I think it's appropriate, Mr. Zernak. So if he can come to the mic, please, I appreciate it.
He thought you were done.
I'd like to thank council and the mayor for welcoming me while we haven't had a service director. Mr. Wilson, I'm glad he's here because I don't have to do this anymore. Service Department has been doing restoration, finishing up mailboxes. I believe we've repaired all the ones that were damaged through the winter. We are patching still, and we've started mowing. So please give our guys space. If you see them on the side of the road, we're also still picking up litter. Thank you.
Did you also put the seat down on several beds? Do you want to talk to that? Because I know some of the residents in the winter.
Yes. So what we did was we went over every single plow route, which is six of them, and we repaired all plow damage or maybe mailman damage. We just repaired it all so that way it looked nice for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work, Steve.
Thank you.
Time to rest.
Mr. Wilson, anything you want to add?
It's been a great four days. Just trying to learn names.
Something he gets to his first week with non-staff.
Who gets brand-new equipment four days into a new job?
Right?
Yeah. Pretty awesome, the guy.
That's a great hookup.
Welcome to Northfield so hot. Is there a timeframe for the mulch?
So we get a grant to do that. The tub grinding company that we had previously, I don't think is doing it anymore. We are going to probably be delayed till at least June, right, Steve?
Yeah. So we are looking into other options and other companies that may come out and tub grind it. Unfortunately, a lot of people, due to staff shortages and just not wanting to do it, they don't want to come out and grind mulch. So we're working on it.
Yeah, we've had many conversations, and thank you for bringing it up because I've been asked about that a bunch of times, but we're doing our best to get that. But like everything, two years to get a truck.
Mr. Zernak, if you could remind me about that, I may have a name to give to you concerning that locally.
Thank you.
Thanks. Director Gelati?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. The Highland Road resurfacing project, tentatively now, is scheduled to begin on May 23rd. That's Highland Road from Valley View heading east all the way to Chamberlain Road. As we've mentioned before, we're expecting traffic delays during the work period, so everyone should be forewarned. And as always, we will alert all affected properties well in advance of the start of the work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Chadda?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by welcoming Director Wilson to the team. Great to have you here. We've gotten a chance to catch up a little bit this week. And I would also like to thank Mr. Zernak for the great work that he's done over, I mean, my goodness, I can't even count how many months it's been now. It's been a while. We have literally become best friends, and I'm only being semi-sarcastic there because we talk to each other. We talk to each other more than we talk to our own wives. So it's been a great relationship, and we've been able to get a ton of work done. I'm very thankful to you and all you've done. Helped us get a lot of things organized at the Rec Center, and all that maintenance there doesn't happen without you in place. So thank you for all the work you've done during this time, and I know the work that you will continue to do with us. And then kind of getting into the report here, junior council, if you guys want to have fun, come to the Rec Center because we do the fun stuff. You guys can jump into Summer Fest planning if you want. I promise you, the rec is fun. You can ask Bart. He'll verify for you.
All the cool young guys like Bart are hanging out at the Rec Center.
Spring Fest was fun last weekend. We got some good park cleanup done. Sam Edgar and the team did a great job of organizing things. All of the vendors and food trucks did well. They all left a final request to come back next year for the same event, so that's always a positive sign. Spring sports are in full swing, and we did get games in last weekend despite the weather that took place during the week. So special thanks to Kuzma and the rest of the service team who were able to get the fields prepped for us, and we did host a baseball tournament last weekend. We are in summer staff hiring mode right now. We will actually be sending a group of people to the school next week to do some hiring during lunch periods. So if you go to Nordonia High School, we will have a crew there. I shouldn't say next week for sure. It's either going to be next week or the week after. They're working on one of the Tuesdays to get that organized. There is, as Councilmember Brant said, there is a shortage of lifeguards. This is a national shortage. This is not unique to northeastern Ohio by any stretch. This is affecting a lot of pools in a lot of cities, so we're working on some unique programming opportunities to bring people in. We have increased our lifeguard pay rate to start at $12 an hour now. So we encourage anyone out there who wants to take lifeguard training, come see us over at the Rec Center. You do not have to be certified. You can come in, get lifeguard trained with us, and we are hiring lifeguards. Summer Fest is in full swing planning mode right now. We have a couple of meetings scheduled for next week. We have Summer Fest going on June 10th and 11th this year. And then, and I should go back to the month of May to highlight Family Fishing Day, which will take place on May 21st. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Varis?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to remind residents of Macedonia that the Macedonia refund is due July 15th unless your Rita return is extended, and then we would extend it for that same period. Also want to, you know, say that it was great working with our interim service director. He and I kind of saw eye to eye because his experience at Westlake and my experience at Independence, we know how to, they kind of, and we know how to spend money, number one. And number two, we know how to buy equipment that is multi-use. So it was great working with you and look forward to continuing working with you in the future.
Thank you. Chief Ripley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Wilson also. It's lucky there wasn't a volleyball at his seat today, but I ran out of time. Also working with Steve, look forward to working with him in the future. Great, he's done a great job. He's helped us out immensely. I also want to mention to the junior council that he says a Rec Center is fun, but we get to play with million-dollar trucks, and it's pretty exciting. So that's my opinion. We have a civil service test coming up May 18th. We're very happy. We actually have 34 applicants, which seems low. Years ago, we used to hold the test in our apparatus bay because there were hundreds, and we're to the point in 2022 where we're very happy with 34. So I want to remind everyone, we are always hiring part-time basic EMT firefighters. Come, we'll train you to a paramedic level through grants. The applications are on the city's website. I also have noticed a trend today about things that have been around since the 90s. John, I think they want to replace us. That's it. If anybody doesn't have any questions.
Thanks, Chief. Chief Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to Mr. Wilson again. Look forward to working with you. And Steve has done a fantastic job. Just a really great guy, gets stuff done. So you've got a good guy to work with here. We're hoping to finish the remodel in the police department tomorrow, Steve?
Yeah.
We got some, the base stuff coming, and then this, I don't know what it's called on the wall.
Rub rail.
Yeah. If you have the paint, the rub rail or whatever it is. But Steve's working on getting that done, so I think that was on back order. So hopefully, that'll be done.
Supply chain issues.
Tomorrow. Supply chain issues, once again. So hopefully, that will be done, and we can move on. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks. Commissioner Rodick? You jumped the line. I had to go to him.
She was next.
I want to give you status on some of the projects that are notable. We did issue a certificate of occupancy for Phase 2 of the Peak Narrow Interior Buildout. That's going to allow them to go ahead and bring about 20, about two dozen more employees from their Valley View operation over to Macedonia real soon. You may have noticed the structural steel going up at the crossings at Golden Link for the optimal project. I mentioned once that's in place, that project will move much quicker in the weather. It's been a real problem for them. And two notable things, again, at the crossings at Golden Link, we issued permits for the demolition of the Golden Corral and for the construction of the Panda Buffet Express. We got agendas set for the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission. Board of Appeals is going to entertain a setback very easily for new construction in Whispering Woods. The Planning Commission is going to entertain a final approval application for Don Bash Jewelers, signed package application for the Ihotler Restaurant, and a request for site and architecture approval for a large project on Empire Parkway. At this point, I'm at Mayor Muller's stand on that.
So Empire Parkway is the old Bedford Ananizing site that I've been working on pretty much from the day I stepped into office, which I referenced earlier. We acquired that property for pretty much nothing, sold it for $1.5 million. It's the dollars I want to use towards the purchase of the property on Park Avenue. They have a very comprehensive thing put in place to build there. I want to, I hear a lot of folks say, oh, I'll keep it green space. Well, that wasn't green space. it green space. Well, that wasn't green space. There was already something in that space. We're just going to remove that and put another company in. Now, this is phase one of four, or three, I'm sorry. And there's multiple distribution buildings that will be in there, which essentially brings business, it brings tax dollars in. It's all the good stuff, as the Economic Development Director is supposed to do, is bring these businesses in. So it's a huge opportunity. The first building is a 300,000-square-foot distribution warehouse, which will bring employees, tax dollars, which does nothing but help us in our goals for the future. So very excited to have that project kicking off and moving forward. There's a lot of wetland within there that they have to work around because it's very expensive to encroach upon wetland. But the project that they're proposing is going to be huge, and I'm very excited to see that coming into the future. So more to come on that. Did I miss anything?
I think you did everything right in the head.
Thank you. And the only reason I skipped you, Mrs. Smith, is because you were sitting there. So Director Smith.
So we're really busy right now. I also want to thank Steve. Steve and I have worked very, very close together for the last couple of months, and he has done an amazing job. And I have seen him grow and learn that contract and work with these guys. He's done a superb job. So HR has attended two job fairs over the last few weeks, trying to get some participation, some interest in coming to the city and working, trying to help Jason out, trying to see if we can find service employees. We gained about six applications from the two job fairs we've already attended. We are attending one next week that is specific to police and fire. So we'll be attending that one to hopefully solicit interest for future firefighters and police officers. We're also working with a program called JOGS, and that is Jobs for Ohio Graduates. And we're hoping that we bring students in, teach them how to work so that it helps them going towards the future. So we're doing that with our summer help or seasonal help in services where we're starting. We're also working with Job and Family Services because we're going to try to implement over the next year, a apprenticeship program through our service department to see if we can help our young people or people in general to understand what it is to become a public employer. Because as we get older and we retire, we need people to be coming in and filling all of our spots. So we're working on that. That'll probably take us about a year to really put a solid program together that we can use. And Planning Committee is working, continuing to work, and send out our letters for our September health fair. End of report.
So essentially, succession planning, which is another reason why we have our junior council now, because we're not all going to be here forever.
Right.
And just to break the summer mood, Steve's not going anywhere. It's almost like we're wishing him well. Steve's still employed by the city, and I don't think you're going anywhere, but he's still our service supervisor, and we want to keep you there. So, no, he's not leaving us.
He's just going to go take a nap at this point.
Yeah. It's like a funeral procession, the way you guys are talking about. Yeah, thanks. We'll see you later. No, he's not going anywhere. All right, Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, want to welcome Director Wilson. I love you, Steve. He's going to join the IT department. He likes my department better.
He likes our department.
We did some testing of our generators a week and a half ago.
Good Friday.
Yeah, good Friday. So because of that, we ordered some new, larger battery backups for dispatch, so that instead of running on multiple battery backups, each station will have its own dedicated battery backup. Received those yesterday. So those will be installed next week. Received the last of my printers that I've been waiting for for six-day months. That one's going in dispatch. So dispatch will have the new multifunction. That is supposed to be delivered tomorrow. So I would imagine Monday or Tuesday, I will have it all set up and running for them. Let's see, what else? Staged hardware for the 10-gig link, the 10-gig link between here and the Rec Center. Installation is going to start on Tuesday. Hopefully, that'll be complete within the week. And I should have them cut over by probably Tuesday of the leak after. And then, the last thing, just to remind junior council, don't listen to these guys. IT department will listen to them. Their toys don't turn on if they take me out.
Hey, Mr. Collins, do you have something about Community Focus?
Oh, yes. Our meetings are now being live streamed on the Community Focus channel as well. So you can watch us on the Community Focus channel, as well as review the meetings live on our website or after the event.
Do you mean their streaming channel or their spectrum channel?
It should be their spectrum channel.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we got the encoder. Actually, the special meeting was the special council meeting prior to this was the first meeting, and I just forgot to tell you guys that we were all set. So thank you for the reminder, Mrs.
Thank you. Director Ghadetti.
I have no report, sir.
Any unfinished business? Hearing none, any new business?
I'd like to make one quick thing. I really appreciate when the Akron Beacon Journal recognizes this area, because we've sometimes forgotten the area. If you ever notice, the rate about Akron, the Plain Dealer always writes about Cleveland, and this whole corridor always seems to get forgotten. Number one today, Nerdonia finished, I believe, number 76 is the top-ranked school in Ohio. The other thing is the Greta Akron School Sports Awards. The finalists have been announced for bowling. We have two girls, Grace and Colby. And the boys, we have three, Kyle, Bryce, and Matt, and the wrestling guys. So it may be in your newsletter, but for some reason, my neighborhood does not get the newsletter. So this was actually in the Akron Beacon Journal today, and I want to thank them for recognizing you do exist. We've got great students. We've got a great school, and they deserve to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to make an announcement to remind everyone to vote on May 3rd. If you haven't already, you can vote this weekend or any day up until May 3rd at the Board of Elections in Akron. There is an issue for the city on there. It's issue 10. It is whether or not to allow council to meet virtually, if there's a health or weather reason for doing so. It is the primaries. If you do not choose a party ballot, you still are able to vote on this issue 10. If you do choose a party ballot, you'll be able to choose the primary candidates for Senator, Governor, all sorts of, House. So definitely, please make sure that you go out and vote on all of those important things on May 3rd.
But all ballots will include the charter.
All ballots will include, yep, all three ballots, which is Democrat, Republican, and no party.
And May 3rd is coming Tuesday.
Yes.
I know it's hard to believe.
But if you can't make it on May 3rd, the polls will be open here. But if you can't make it then, go to the Board of Elections. It's very easy to get that done. And I would, at this time, like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G2, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brant.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Okay, council and I, and I would also like to invite Mr. Ghadetti into the room. We're going to go into an executive session. At the conclusion of that, it's very likely that we will adjourn for the evening, but we're going to go into there first. So thank you.